Hi, aloha and welcome to the Senate Committee on Energy Economic Development and Tourism, 1:00 PM Agenda. Note, we have two GM agendas, the 1:00 PM and then our 1:30 PM. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at a later date and time. A public notice with that date and time will be posted on the legislature website. Please note, due to the amount of the testimony for the agendas, we have a time limit of one minute. First two measures will be here at the same time since they are for the same person and position, just two separate terms. GM 608, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Directors of the Agribusiness Development Corporation, Governor Taro nominee Jesse Cook, for a term to expire 6/30/2024, and then a term to expire for 6/30/2028. First up, Sharon Hurd, testifying on behalf of the Department of Ag, Dexter.
Good afternoon, Dexter Kishida. Someone told was here. Dexter Kishida, Hawaii Department of Agriculture. Thank you very much. We fully support the nominee. And while our testimony does speak about the ability to acquire funds and things like that, I'd like to speak on his leadership and networking capacity because as a board, I really feel those are strong and necessary attributes that a member needs. And in my work with Jesse, he's done a phenomenal job in pulling together diverse groups of people to get some tremendous work done around the ag and food system sector. So, we stand in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Wendy Gady with ADC.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Senate members. I'm Wendy Gady. I'm with the Agribusiness Development Corp. One of the things people often say in passing is, "How's it going?" And what they expect is a fast answer. But Jesse's a man of few words, so when he says, "How's it going?", it really means, "What are you working on? What do you need help with? Who do you need contact with? What kind of influence or conversations do you need to have that I'm going to sharpen my pencil and go after?" And you know, ADC has really big goals. Our goals are to grow local food production and to develop an export business. He understands that, and he's the magic behind the missing component, which is how. Just because that's our goals, we need to know how we're going to do it, who we're going to work with, doesn't make financial sense. How do we continue to sustain financially? He's the individual that can help us get there. So, we stand in strong support of Jesse.
Thank you. Next up, Michael Municata, testifying for Ulupono.
Chair, Vice Chair, good afternoon. Caroline Julian, Brina's on behalf of Ulupono Initiative. We stand on our testimony in support of the nominee.
Thank you, Caroline. Next up, testifying for Hawaii Farm Bureau, Brian Miomoro.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Brian Miomoro here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have a written testimony. I just wanted to come up here and share a few words and show our strong support for the nomination of Mr. Cook. Farm Bureau's had the... was fortunate to work with Mr. Cook, especially during the COVID pandemic. And we are confident in his background experience, especially his financial investment background, and approaching farming from a business standpoint also, which will really be an asset to ADC. Not a lot of people aware, but Mr. Cook was instrumental in the Farm to Food Bank program and the Farm to Nonprofit programs during the COVID pandemic, which virtually saved some farms from going under, farms and ranches, and also provided the food for those families, our families, our friends, and neighbors that were in need. He's visionary. He's very meticulous in decision-making, and we believe that he will be a great addition to the ADC Board. So, he has the Farm Bureau's utmost support, and we urge this committee to confirm Mr. Cook for the ADC Board Directors.
Thank you, Brian. Next up, Lauren Zerbo, testifying for Food Industry Association on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Next up, in support Larry Jeffs. Actually, we've got a number of people in support. Larry Jeffs in support, Kaipoke Kona in support, Jim Wyben in support, Brandon Tomita, testifying for Law Harvest in support, Kyoni Lee in support, Melissa Roden, North Shore Economic Vitality Partnership in support, Kalamans Council, Nicole Velasse in support, Jason Okuhama in support, Commercial Business Landing, Jason Ueki, Germinate by H. High Plan in support, Matthew Johnson in support, for John Seward in support, for Hawaii Farming LLC. You know, we get 31 people in support, no one in opposition. Anybody else in the room which seemed to testify? Seeing none, Jesse, if you would like to come up and say a few words.
Good afternoon, Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, and Members of the Committee. It's my honor to be nominated as a member of the Agribusiness Development Corporation Board of Directors. The ADC currently manages over 20,000 acres of farmland on Oahu and Kauai, as well as agricultural water systems, food processing facilities, and renewable energy facilities. These holdings make ADC one of the most important government organizations guiding the future of Hawaii's farming sector. I wish to become a member of the Board of Directors because I believe the ADC can help to increase Hawaii's food security and strengthen the economic prospects of local farmers and ranchers. With the lands, water systems, and facilities under ADC management, the ADC plays a significant role in supporting Hawaii's agricultural industry and increasing Hawaii's food security. Thank you again for having me here. With that, I welcome any questions.
Mahalo. Thank you. Committee members, any questions? You know, I asked all my questions of you earlier, but...
Senator K. Your resume shows that you are very involved in the financial aspects of your previous jobs. What do you think is needed financially to make this be successful?
You know, I think we should think more about going after government federal grants and loans and things like that. There are a lot of projects that fit within some of these federal programs, especially irrigation infrastructure, even renewable energy, value-added processing. I'm already working with Wendy Gady on several government programs, federal programs, that I think will fit with some of the projects she has on Kauai and Oahu. That's one area. The other area is just making sure that all of these assets that have been funded are able to work together efficiently, and we have a plan going forward. I definitely don't want to delay anything. I just want to make sure we're asking the right questions along the way so that all of these facilities can work with local farmers in the most efficient way possible.
So, do you think that currently or in the near past that we haven't been going after the grants? We haven't been looking at government programs?
I think we could do a lot more. You know, I think, you know, right now I'm looking at a $10 to $20 million grant called the Community Change Grant with no matching requirement. It can fund microgrids. It can fund housing improvements, make houses more greenhouse gas efficient, energy efficient, can build parks and roadways and things like that. And again, there's no matching requirement. So, I think, you know, these federal programs, especially after the pandemic with all these stimulus packages, there's just so much money out there that we have to really be proactive in going after it right now.
But one of the problems with these programs or these funds, these grants from the government, is there, many times it's one-time. It's not self-sustaining. And so, we go ahead and we get the grants, and we invest in it, and we put in all this infrastructure, and then we have to come into legislature because the money's going to go away. And they hire people, and then it's going to go away. So, we tend to have these programs with these one-time investments, and then we can't sustain it. So, how do you resolve that?
Well, I think, you know, it matters what the federal program is because, you know, if you have a federal program that's going to be able to fund a microgrid, that's something that's going to be there for a long time. You've got the money to fund it, and now you've got to figure out how you're going to maintain it, right? But that funding need, that initial funding need, has been met with outside funds, not having to go to the Hawaii taxpayers to fund it. So, if you fund a microgrid, yet you're going to have to figure out how you're going to operate it for the years to come, but at least you've got that initial funding. Now, there's some federal grants that maybe are not well-planned, and then you might have that outcome where, you know, where did that funding go? But there are a lot of projects out there that have really benefited from that initial grant and that have been able to build a business around that. So, I... There's definitely instances where that is true, but I'm hoping that if you plan well, that you're able to get this federal money and then, you know, figure out a way to make it work from there on out.
Well, I just hope that you do the figuring before we get the money and before we invest in it because then we find ourselves in a hole that we can't sustain it. So, not get the money, build it, and then try to figure out what we're going to do with it. So, I hope that's going to be the path, not put the voice before the choir.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Jesse, I just got one question for you. As an interim Board member, what insights have you gained from your participation in ADC meetings thus far? And how do you plan to leverage the knowledge to contribute effectively to the Board's decision-making process?
Well, you know, I've been at, I think, two or three Board meetings now. I've been named as a member of the Permitted Interaction Group for Value Added Facilities. So, I think that's probably where I can do a lot of good. Again, it's just about thinking about all of this food product innovation network that's trying to be developed in Wahi Wahi, but then also thinking about how are all these... How is the HPP processing machine going to work with local farmers? What's the hauling going to be like between those two facilities? How is Leeward Community College and their kind of accelerator program going to work with students to build up the farming, to build up to value-added product? And how is that going to feed into the larger high-pressure processing machine? So, I think the assets are in place, and it's good that this land has been reserved for agriculture. But now it's just, how do you make all of this work as well as possible? You're always going to have times where you mess up, or you don't... You haven't factored in some kind of problem. But if you ask the right questions beforehand and do the right planning, hopefully it'll go more smoothly.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just one additional comment. I wanted to note that, you know, the testimonies that have been submitted on your behalf represent such a wide spectrum. It's very exciting to see the depth and breadth of your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jesse. Okay, next up, we have Jennifer Wilkinson. Jennifer Wilkinson, consideration and confirmation to the Community-Based Economic Development Advisory Council, Governor Taro nominee, for term to expire 6/30/2028. First up, Ms. Wendy Gady for ADC, Agribusiness Development Corporation.
We're going to stand in written support and strong support in this session.
Thank you. Next up, Sharon Hurd for Department of Agriculture. Thank you. Next up, Michael Municata, testifying for Ulupono. Oh, wait, hang on, hang on. Sorry, sorry. Sorry. GM 671, submitting for consideration and confirmation for Jennifer Wilkinson. First up, D-Bed, Mr. James Tokioha.
Thank you, Chair. You have our written testimony.
Thank you. Next up, Lisa Hall on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Next up, Gerard Takasi, testifying for County of Hawaii Liquor Department, in support, Jill Pauline in support, Kelly Lee in support. There are 17 people in support of the individual. So, I will go to Jennifer on Zoom if you would like to say a few words, Jennifer.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee members. I'm honored to be a nominee for the Community-Based Economic Development Advisory Council. Thank you for allowing me to appear via Zoom. I have reached out to each of you, asking if there's any further questions you might have, and I am open to any questions at this point in time. I would love to be a part of this advisory panel, and I believe that my background is very diverse and would be complimentary to those who are existing on the Advisory Council. But I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, any questions? Senator K.
Thank you. Aloha, and thank you for being willing to serve. What exactly would you say is your goal or outcomes of serving on this Board?
I believe that... I'm a resident of Big Island, and I think that the Big Island has an amazingly diverse culture and community, and I think we have a lot of potential to build up some small businesses here that exist and to spread the information that is available, of the programs that are available with D-Bed. And so, I think a part of my intent of being on this Advisory Council is to help with the communication and the education about the available programs for small businesses. But I think there's a little bit of a disconnect there, so I would be excited to be a part of bringing out that information across the county and then working to encourage the development of small businesses that are started and facilitated by our small business folks here in our community and supported by the state D-Bed programs.
What kind of benchmarks are you looking forward to?
That I'm looking forward to, benchmarks?
Yeah, what kind of... I mean, you know, everybody talks about more communication, letting people know what's going on, educating them, and then there's no outcomes or there are no benchmarks. So, is it, you know, do you have more concrete benchmarks that you want to choose?
Well, I actually had hoped to start working with our Chamber of Commerce to reach out to the individuals that are registered with the Chamber of Commerce, and then working with our county here for anybody who is a registered business owner and kind of reaching out to them individually in their each... in each district, and working with the county council members there to kind of just get the word out and encourage small businesses to look at the programs available through C-Bed.
As a member, I know you're on the Big Island, but isn't this council statewide?
It is.
It is statewide. So, you're not going to have tunnel vision only for the Big Island? That it's going to be statewide?
Absolutely not, absolutely not. And I will... I will work in any capacity that I can to reach out to, in similar situations, to each of the counties. If it's... If it works for the Big Island, I just understand that as part of this Board and being a member residing on the Big Island that... And with any program that comes from here, you're supposed to look at the program as to how it fits into that particular community. So, there is probably a varied type of methods that you could use on each of the individual islands based on their structure to get the word out.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Jennifer, I just got one question for you as well. You know, your experience in bankruptcy law and finance offers a unique perspective on business resilience and restructuring. How do you anticipate applying this knowledge to support small business as entrepreneurs, not just in Hawaii Island, but throughout the council?
Certainly. I think that the way that I've come to the background that I have has been really unconventional, and learning about finance from the back end first. I worked in bankruptcy and went through law school before I got my MBA and went into business. So, I learned what didn't work first, and so was able to kind of see trends that happen based on different types of business plans and business models. So, giving... Having that perspective, it's when I look at a business plan or I listen to an individual who's talking about their business, and it's so exciting when you actually are because they have such excitement and thrill for what they're doing. Sometimes being, having that perspective that I do, I can ask questions or kind of drill down into areas that perhaps are not thought of and allow them to have a more broad systemic thought process to some of the issues that they may not have even contemplated may come up. So, I think helping ask specific questions and really explore different areas in someone's business plan or in their model to help them formalize perhaps a better or more thoughtful approach to their business.
So, Jennifer, and just a follow-up. You know, all too often and lately, artificial intelligence has made it very easy to draft a business plan. And, you know, it literally just tells us what we want to hear. In your experience as a business owner, how do you weed through the loopholes of, is this guy for real? Is it a gut thing for you like it's been for me? And based on the experience and background of that individual seeking to move business forward or engage in business, like, I mean, it's kind of a keen sense of...
Yeah, I think it's a combination.
Who's giving you the BS and who's not?
I think it's a combination, and I think you kind of hit the nail on the head there, and it's about communication and talking to the folks. Tell me about your business. Tell me about your business plan. Have you thought about this? And kind of asking questions to lead them in a path. You know, I'm a mediator as well, and so instead of leading the horse to the water, you kind of help them develop that concept. And so, when you're talking to someone and you're asking them more thorough questions about their business plan, I think you can really get a feel for if they understand that piece or if it was prepared by AI. And even if it was, do they have a con... Do they content... Can they contemplate, or do they have some experience with that? And/or do they have a plan to address it? So, I think talking to people, having a conversation about what they're doing, what their business model looks like, I think is a real good way to figure out what's AI and what's not.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, moving on to GM 736, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Directors of the Natural Energy Laboratory of Hawaii Authority, Governor Taro nominee, Mr. David Leng Kalipi, for a term to expire 6/30/2028. First up, testifying for Ne'ahua, maybe D-Bed, on behalf of D-Bed or Ne'ahua, Gregory Barber, or Director Tokioha. Thank you. Next up, Rich Matsuda in support, Freedom Dennis in support, Donna Lynn Dela Cruz in support, Thira Allen Peck in support, Billy Piper in support, Nicole Velasco in support, Charles H. Young in support, Marissa Sandblum in support, Sherri Kao Ahhi in support, Hannah Kihalana Springer in support, Ikaka Mahoi, and Barbara Shida all in support. Members, any... Oh, hang on. David, would you like to say a few words?
Aloha, Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, and Members of the Committee. Thank you for consideration, considering the nomination. I'm honored to be nominated to continue to serve on the Board of Ne'ahua. And I submitted my statement, and in the interest of time, we'll just offer to answer any questions.
Thank you. First, thank you for wanting to serve as well, David. Members, any questions?
Aloha. Thank you for being here. So, you've been on the Board for two years.
Correct.
And in your questionnaire, you say, "During my term of service, I hope to work with the Board of Directors and strengthen relationships with local community members and organizations." So, did you not do this during your first two years?
No, I'm hoping to continue to support that. It's in the beginning of the statement. We've been... We've been working and broadening the work that's been done. In the last two years, I've been participating with the cultural hui, with the lineal descendants and cultural practitioners to help the Ne'ahua personnel and the cultural practitioners to share their diverse perspectives.
And has that come to fruition?
We're making some very solid progress compared to where it started. I think there's a much broader understanding, particularly within the Ne'ahua personnel, of the importance and the history of the... That the link... Of the ancestral knowledge and what the lineal descendants and cultural practitioners hold very valuable. And it... To answer your question, the progress is when you're talking about things like, should there be the drilling of a water well or something of that nature? There's a broader perspective of the baseline understanding and the ability to have a meaningful dialogue of what is actually possible as opposed to, "This is what we want, and this is what we don't want."
You know, I raise this, and this is for all nominees, is that, you know, we sit here year after year, and we confirm people, and we hear the same kinds of broad responses, communication, working together, working with the community. And so, the outcomes, the benchmarks seem to go by the wayside, and then we get another group of people come in next year, and we hear the same things. So, you know, I'm trying to drill it down, so it's not just you individually. And you also state that you want to support efforts to attract the tenants and companies. What kind of efforts are being put forward that you're going to support?
I think, well, with respect to Ne'ahua, we're in the process... The staff is in the process of doing a new master plan, updating their master plan and strategic plan. I think Ne'ahua has... Is reaching a point where they're about to transition and look at what they've done well so far and what else can be done, what does the future look like, being able to move forward? So, I think they've done an exceptional job with respect to aquaculture and having some of the world's best hatcheries and those types of businesses. I think we're, along with the cultural part, we're also looking at not only innovation and technology using the very unique resources that are there, but how do we incorporate, for example, some of the ancestral knowledge as it pertains to things like aquaculture? And how do we take contemporary application and broaden it so that, yes, it's technology, yes, it's entrepreneurship, but how is it relevant to the broader community?
Haven't we been talking about aquaculture for decades now? And it doesn't seem like we have a lot to show for those efforts, or am I mistaken?
I think it depends on how you're measuring it. If you're measuring it in terms of scale and gross revenue, then we don't have a super-large banging industry. If we're looking at specific areas of expertise in certain technologies, then, as a Board member, I've been told, and it's been represented, that Ne'ahua is like the Silicon Valley of aquaculture. So, it depends on how you're measuring what the value is of your investment to date.
I guess I have a problem with that because, you know, we can be a think tank, and we can have all that technology, but if it doesn't translate, then what do we have? I mean, you know, we need to... Part of it is, yes, we get the knowledge and... But we need to translate it into, at some point, you know, of scale.
Agreed. And I think it also, for me, and what I would like to help with as the... As Ne'ahua looks at the new master plan and looks at the strategic plan, is how does this translate not only to industry, but how does it translate to jobs? And how does it translate to an appropriate connection to people and place of the surrounding community island and then the growth, economic growth of the state?
But isn't that... Isn't that what we're all working towards? Isn't that natural? I just... I'm sorry, it just bothers me that we tend to discuss, study, you know, deliberate about all stuff that is kind of... That's the basis. Why aren't we moving beyond that? Why aren't we passing the discussion? You know, we know that we need the economics. We know that it has to all come together, but we keep talking about it and not implementing. And I just hope that the Board will go beyond that and take the next step because I don't want to sit here two, three years from now with a Board again or renewing members or whatever, and we get the same, you know, we're looking at it.
Understood.
We're valuing it in this sense, and we're not valuing it in that sense.
Yes. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. So, just one question, you know, and we talked prior to this hearing. So, you know, given your experience in renewable energy and community engagement, of course, we talked about cultural practitioners and having them engage a lot of the projects. You know, we envision leveraging different skills to attract and support the tenants and companies in Ne'ahua. How do you separate yourself from renewable energy, in this case, wind? And, and I say that because I know a while back, we had this conversation where when windmills came about, you know, there was a huge, huge opposition coming in from Moloka, which was many years ago. And, you know, how do you separate yourself? Yet you hear from the cultural practitioners that have been against wind? How do you keep yourself separated from that? Or at least then at that point feel okay? These cultural practitioners are in heavy opposition of this type of wind farms in these areas? At the same time, being able to attract, as a board member, the diversity of different types of energy?
Oh, okay. So my background is in, is in wind development. And, but I'm also very interested in all of the technologies and support. And in all of our projects, whether it's wind or any other technology, the focus has been in working and co-designing with the communities that are there, right? So as it pertains to Nauha, you know, this work with the stakeholders, this work with the community members and sharing and kind of talking through, this is what Nauha would like to do. This is what we have resources to attract. And finding the intersection in the Venn diagram really for what is acceptable and what can everybody get excited about being able to move forward. And so it's not so much like me pushing wind because I know wind. It's exploring what is available. Big Island has many other resources besides wind, right? And Nauha has the deep seawater, you know, there, there's solar. There's lots of other ways to be able to address innovation and energy.
But so my question is, can you set aside that difference? Or if that, if the issue does become that wind is part of it in the Big Island? Because, you know, as we head towards diversity, right?
Yes.
You know, we get all the blackouts going on on the Big Island. Can you set aside that portion of it and say, you know, this is in my personal realm that I'll recuse myself?
Oh, definitely. If there's ever a conflict, I would be happy to recuse myself. Yes. And I'm involved in many different things. So if there's ever, if ever there's a point where they say, no, you cannot be impartial, I have no problem saying, I'll sit on the side on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
I want to follow up on Senator Kim's question because I think we all see the potential of aquaculture and its growth. As many of us see that Nauha is probably the epicenter for our foray into this area. But really, it's the Department of Agriculture that is not helpful, right? Over the years, the Department of Agriculture has asked for absolutely no money to grow aquaculture. They've introduced no bills to grow aquaculture. So we really can't say that it's Nauha's negligence or lack of due diligence that have not been able to grow aquaculture. It's because the Department of Agriculture doesn't really care about aquaculture.
Is that the question to me, Senator?
I tried to throw your save here because it's not really your fault that it hasn't really grown to the potential that it could. It's because your partner, your big brother in this area, Department of Agriculture, he doesn't care.
And if confirmed, then moving forward, I would like to be able to help the staff to be able to explore that and get to some detailed results in, in response to, don't come here and just explain concept, right? So that we could, we could make some additional progress. So yes, sir.
The successes you've had at Nauha have really been because of a private-public partnership.
That's correct.
Hatch, if it wasn't for Hatch, aquaculture would be very much struggling and even further behind than where we are today. But it was because of Hatch and the private sector that has come in to help leverage your assets there to grow what is the beginnings of a very growing sector within agriculture.
Yes.
I have a question about your thoughts on public-private partnership because I look at Nauha as really a huge, huge opportunity that we don't take full potential of. And part of it is because there's never enough dollars here to provide the infrastructure and the growth opportunities. There's just a big barren, ninety percent of it is barren fallow lava lands. And no matter how many years I've been trying to compel Mr. Barber to like really look at public-private partnership, if lawmakers aren't going to give you the money to grow in the areas that you see, then go partner with the private sector. But outside of Hatch, I don't see any of that being done. I mean, you talk about workforce development and the system for housing. There is no hotel near the airport in Kona that's within twenty minutes drive. It would be great to have an airport hotel there, which could be like a public-private partnership with you to then need, get the seat money to go build out the other infrastructure you need. But it seems like you just always, not you, but Nauha always seems to wait for government to do any productive utilization of their lands.
Well, I just learned in, in our recent board meeting, as we were looking at the updating the master plan and strategic plan, that there was a master plan in 2011. And there was a, there is a section of the, of the park that is focused on creating a public-private economic development type park that would also include housing for researchers and that type of development. As a part of being able to move forward, because I wasn't a member back then, we are looking at all of that as we get ready to address the, the new strategic plan and master plan.
That was eleven years, you said 2011?
2011, yes.
So you're ready, you're, that's a long time ago.
Yeah, it is. And I'm not, we hadn't discussed it in the last two years, but having learned about it this week.
You've been on the board for two years.
Yes.
So that I find astonishing, right? It's been 2011 that it was developed. You've been on the board for two years and only now you're saying that you have realized that there's a strategic plan that you should be moving on?
No, that this was a part of the master plan that was in 2011. And over the last two years, we've been looking at the different parts of the strategic plan and getting, reporting on how, how to make the park financially sustainable, right? And now that it is, we are looking at, okay, what's next? I think there's a, there's a recognition that there are areas to grow and there's areas to do more and to try to actually fulfill the potential of Nauha in more expansive ways with clear benchmarks.
And getting their year open to doing public-private partnerships.
Exploring them and looking at them as, as one of the board members.
Thank you, Senator Wakai. Okay, moving on, thank, thank you, David. Moving on to GM 605. Submitting for consideration and confirmation as a strategic broadband coordinator, Department of Business, Economic Development, Tourism gubernatorial nominee Chung Chang for a term to expire twelve seven twenty twenty six. First up, Director Tokioke for D-Bed.
Chair, my chair members, D-Bed stands in strong support.
Thank you. Next up, Mark Kikoi State Energy Office. Not here. In support, Wayne Inoy HTDC in support. Eugene Tian testifying for D-Bed. Thank you. Georgia Skinner, Creative Industries in. Thank you. Next up, Dean Minakami in support for Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. Wendy Gady, ADC.
Wendy Gady, ADC, we stand in very strong support of our team.
Thank you. Next up, Mary Alice Evans.
Stand in strong support of Chung Chang's nomination.
Thank you. There's all getting nice smiles in this department. Bert Lum, oh, wait, maybe I should stop. No, Bert Lum also in support.
You know, Chair, Chair of Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai and members of the committee. I just wanted to take this opportunity. I, I stand in extremely strong support of the nomination for Chung Chang as strategic broadband coordinator. I, I am Bert Lum. I'm the State Digital Equity Coordinator. And, you know, I've had the pleasure of working with Chung over the years at D-Bed. And in the short time that he's been part of the Hawaii Broadband Digital Equity Office, he's done an excellent job at, you know, meeting the needs of not only the, you know, executive branch and the legislative branch and as well as the stakeholders across the community. And he's also brought the team so that the team can now have a team focus on what our objectives are. And one of the last things I wanted to say is that, you know, he's also brought a level of empathy that digital equity needs as we move forward in the next phase of implementation, you know, with the opportunity with our, you know, digital equity capacity grant. So I stand in strong support and I'd love to see him nominated and confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Daniel Smith, Hawaii Broadband Hui.
Yes, aloha, Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai. I am Dan Smith, a member of the Hawaii Broadband Hui. And we had a good working relationship with Chang Chung. And we're also looking at his broad experience in the private sector and in government. I think he can help a great deal push forward the digital equity activities of, of his office. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Brian Miyamoto testifying for Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair of Hawaii Farm Bureau, stands in strong support of law of me, of Chung Chang.
Thank you. Next up, Amber Turnus, individual.
Standing in strong support.
Thank you. You should be listed at D-Bed too with the smile. David Sinkink testifying for Foreign Trade Zone in support. Gregory Barber, Nauha in support. Gwen Yamamolau in support. Janine Sukie in support. Kara Binger also in support. And Lauren Primiano also in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on behalf of the nominee? Chung, all you.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We're happy because we're nearing the end of the session. I want to spend some time thanking a lot of people that allowed me to be in this position. First of all, the governor, I'm thankful for his appointment. The Chief of Staff, Brooke Wilson, has been very instrumental in making this also happen. I want to thank our director as well as the Lieutenant Governor to also make, making that happen. So a lot of people have gotten me to this point and so now I got to deliver. I also want to thank all the supporting testimonies, my team, Bert, Amber and Kara. But I do also have to thank my family. So if you can just allow me to do that because every time you go through confirmation, it, it, it puts stress on the family. So my wife Jane, daughter Remy, and my son, who's probably viewing this hearing from his dorm room in California. So I want to thank my family for world, they mean a world to me. So I want to thank them. I bring a lot of experience into this role, particularly the project management experience. Although it's a short history, my experience in state government as airspace coordinator, as former deputy director. And you've had a chance to see how I operate as when I was the community clerk in Ways and Means. Hopefully I did a good job. And I bring mostly project management. So seeing a project from beginning to delivering. And to, you know, Senator Kim's question about, you know, what are we, what are we going to have to show for it? We're going to have metrics. We're going to have exactly the percentage increase or the number of, you know, cover population served as we go through this process for the next seven years. So we're going to have numbers for you. So maybe in, you know, next time around, if I am appointed again, I can provide numbers to what we've accomplished and how we've accomplished them. So thank you. I, in the, you know, for, for time, I know, you know, I'll keep it short and answer any questions the committee has.
Chung, thank you for wanting to serve. Open up for, to the committee for any questions.
Yes, I should have read the trend reverse.
Or you could just break the trend and not say nothing. Sorry, that was too easy, like pickleball. No, no, no.
Yeah, the pickleball All-Star team in the making, right?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Senator Kim.
So Chung, in due disclosure, having worked with you, I, I know that you are fully qualified and capable of handling this job and doing a really excellent job. But the question I have for you is, and pretty much you touched upon it, you know, you came here as a bill researcher and then you moved on to, back to D-Bed. And then you were deputy and then you came back here for community clerk and then you went back to D-Bed and now you're broadband. So what is it that you really want to do when you grow up?
I'm still growing up. No, I, I'm committed to this broadband work for the long haul. Like I said, it's seven years. We actually have very specific things that we want to do for the next seven years. Yes, the details are still being worked out as we do the outreach to communities and learn about what the exact needs are and what does that look like? How do we budget it? How do we help execute those plans and projects? I'm committed. This nomination is, you know, for till December 2026. So at least we have that commitment. But I think there's a lot more work. And like Bert said, we have a very great team. It's clicking and it's running on all cylinders. And I'm super excited for this, the, the digital equity work that we're going to do. So it's a part of the, you know, the connect co-work, right? There's, there's Homeland, there's infrastructure work, infrastructure work that UH is doing. We're doing the digital equity piece. So everyone's running on all cylinders and it's a great time to deploy these broadband projects.
I look forward to your continuity here.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just wanted to make a comment. You know, thank you for your opening. I think many people forget that the sacrifices of the family is huge. I know I've asked you like so many questions. I think it was good, the elaboration of the different partners that you guys have there because you've got DHHL, D-U-A, and another thing. So I'm glad for the understanding and the knowledge of the probably fifty thousand questions I've asked you prior to. So I just wanted to say good job, you know, on answering the questions. And without further ado, you guys want to go straight into decision making? Okay.
Oh, yeah, I just, sorry, I came in late. I was in Hawaiian, so. Never come on aloha, came on Hawaiian anyway. You know, in your questionnaire, you noted, I don't know if you answered this, I'm just going to read what I have. In your questionnaire, you noted the weakness of an organization, including administrative support. What are the roadblocks that you have encountered in building your team at Hawaii Broadband Digital? What do you think is?
So our office, so if I had to, you know, in my question, I had to say weakness is administrative support. But we just figure out, figure things out in, you know, if it means, you know, we do the administrative duties and that's what we do. So we just got to figure it out. And then, so, and the director's office have been very helpful. The secretaries have been very helpful with helping us through some of the administrative processes that we have to go through. But no, we've, we've not missed any marks. We've hit all of our goals on time. And so whatever needs to be, whatever needs to happen, we just figure it out. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Senator.
See it for me?
Thank you. We're going into decision making. Okay. Decision making on the one PM agenda. The first two GMs on the agenda are GM 608 slash 609. Since they are for the same person and position, just two separate terms, we'll just take the one vote for both measures. My recommendation is advise and consent GM 608 and GM 609. Committee members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Aye vote, yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Pavella?
Yes.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next up, GM, the next GM on the agenda is GM 671. Consideration for Community-Based Economic Development Advisory Council, gubernatorial nominee Jennifer Wilkinson for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty. Recommendation is to advise and consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Knowing the presence of all members, any opposition or reservations to the Chair's recommendation? Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next GM, GM 736. Submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Directors of the Natural Energy Laboratory Hawaii Authority gubernatorial nominee David Leng Kalipi for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty. My recommendation is advise and consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Any opposition or reservations to the Chair's recommendation? Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next GM, 605. Submitting for consideration and confirmation as a strategic broadband coordinator, Department of Business, Economic Development and Tourism gubernatorial Chung Chang for a term expire twelve seven twenty twenty six. Recommendation is to advise and consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Knowing the presence of all members, any opposition or reservations to the Chair's recommendation? Knowing the presence of all members, any opposition or reservations to the Chair's recommendation? Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of you. And if you would please reach out to the rest of our Senators, if you have that opportunity, please reach out to them. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the Senate Committee on Energy, Economic Development, and Tourism 1:30 PM agenda. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the likely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at a later date and time. A public notice with that date and time will be posted on the legislature website. Due to time constraints, we will limit testimony to one minute per testifier. You know, I asked that, we have your testimony, if you want to stand on your testimony, that'd be really good. And let's start off with, first of all, by the way, thank you folks for wanting to serve. Let's start off with GM 703, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Directors of the Hawaii Tourism Authority, gubernatorial nominee Blaine Yosato, for term to expire 6/30/2027. First up, we have Daniel Naho P, testifying for Hawaii Tourism Authority. Daniel.
Aloha, Daniel Naho P, interim CEO and President of the Hawaii Tourism Authority. Aloha to Chair, Vice Chair, and the rest of the committee. I would like to say wholeheartedly, with great applaud of supporting our two nominees here, for their concern for us as state employees and workers of HTA. They have put their heart in supporting us on achieving our goals and making things happen, like getting in front of all the work that needs to be done, guiding us in excellent ways, and providing us the support that we need. So definitely, we support both of our nominees here today. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, Director Tokioke, behalf of D-Bed in support. Edwin Sniffen in support for Department of Transportation. Mike Iosua for Imanaka Sato in support. Brian Miyamoto testifying, behalf of Farm Bureau.
Thank you Chair of Hawaii Farm Bureau, standing on the steps, supporting nominee.
Thank you. Next up, Amy Gilliam on Zoom in support.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Next up, Mufi Hanaman, Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, also in support. Edwin H. Sniffen, Department of Transportation, Airports Division, in support. Stephanie Iona also in support. Adrian Kamali in support. Danny Kupcho in support. Anne Baracelli in support. Paul Casey in support. Dean Konya, Alan Sukita, Richard Velazquez, Feline Mahina-Duarte, Marlena Kidani, Mark Dunkley, Stephen Tevis, Lester Kodama, Denise Yamaguchi, Sharon Soper, Matthew Sasaki, Tammy Kotani, all in support. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify in support on behalf of the individual? Seeing none, Blaine, would you like to say a few words?
Aloha Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, and committee members. My name is Blaine Yosato, and I'm very honored to be here. I come here with really good intentions, not suggesting that I can do the job flawlessly, but anything I do, I put my entire heart and soul into. And I think the shepherding and leading of the Hawaii Tourism Authority, especially as it relates to economic conditions and, you know, being the number one economic driver in this state, I think it's a very, very important responsibility, one that I take very seriously. One of the first things I learned early on by joining the Board was it needs to be a co-co thing. Can't be divided by individual concerns or interests. Has to be all of us together, in it together. Again, I think that's a really important way of shepherding the organization, the institution, and in the end, building its brand. And brands are built on trust and relationships. And I think that's job one for all of us on the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee members, any questions? Senator Wakai.
Congratulations, Blaine. I've enjoyed working with you over the years. Just one question. At one time, when you were first nominated, you were nominated as the Board Chair, and you stepped down because of the merger between Hawaiian Airlines and Alaska. And that was going to take up so much of your time that you couldn't be Board Chair. But even in your capacity as a member of the Board, are you going to have enough bandwidth to be able to focus on your duties at HTA in addition to merging these two big airlines?
Yes. In fact, you know, it's the circumstances by which I stepped down as the Chair completely related to the acquisition of Hawaiian Airlines. And a lot of unknowns at that time. And so I felt that I had to give my full energy to the transaction. You know, Hawaiian Airlines, I've been there almost 40 years. You know, it's a family, it's O'Hana, right? And so I felt like I needed to put all of that energy there. Time has passed, and I'm very pleased that we have a new Chair in Mufi Hanaman. And I've assessed the situation to where, in fact, I've agreed to become the Chair of the Branding Committee. So not only am I ready, able to serve on the Board, I'll take a lead role in one of the key committees.
Thank you. Senator Kim.
Aloha.
Aloha.
You and I have had many discussions about tourism and HTA, and having served as a Chair for tourism way back when. Do you feel that by representing the airlines that you're able to have a broad, broader sense and not necessarily a conflict necessarily for the airlines? I mean, I know there's people that have been serving on Boards, and we get complaints about how they tend to want to push for measures that will support their industry or their company. And that's human nature. I mean, same thing goes on here in the ledge. If you work for a company and you tend to support bills, you get criticized for that. But I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, you know, I'm honored, actually, to have been selected the Chair. It's the first time in the institution's history that the airline industry is represented in that way. So it's another way of saying that there's balance, I think, on the Board. You know, you've got, again, Mufi Hanaman, who represents not just the hotels, but all of the industry, service industry. Yeah. And I think that's why we have different disciplines that we bring, the varied experiences that we bring to the table. Really, at the end of the day, and it goes back to the concept of co-co, I think as a Board, we have to work in unison for the collective good, right? We're all in it together, as opposed to our individual interests. And so the way the makeup of the Board is designed through statute, I think addresses the issue of one industry view versus another.
Yeah, we had to change that, and we had a lot of pushback because there were just too many stakeholders on the Board and not enough of the broad community. And the activities were not represented on the Board and so forth. And we put a Hawaiian practitioner on the Board. So we've had to do that by statute because it just wasn't happening.
Wasn't happening.
Yeah. So I think that's really important, that even though you come from that area or that industry, that as a Board member, you have to represent all. Similar to us, you know, we get elected from our district, but we have to represent the whole state because we vote on all the measures. The other area I wanted to touch upon, you've been on the Board during this whole time of turmoil that's been going on with HTA, whether or not to continue to keep HTA, to sunset HTA. The automatic monies, the dollars from the TAT that was earmarked automatically for HTA got away. And I remember telling the industry, one day, you know, you guys take it for granted, and one day it can be taken away. And nobody thought that day was going to come, and that day came. So you've been on the Board during that whole turmoil.
Right.
And so hopefully, we're coming out of that. So what have you learned, and where do we go from here?
So I think, you know, it goes back to trust. You know, I come from an industry that is all about trust and branding. And when people choose an airline, as an example, they choose it based on a relationship, and they choose it based on the brand implications, you know, what perceived value for what they paid for. There's similarities to the institution that is the Hawaii Tourism Authority in that, you know, as a Board, we're charged with shepherding and guiding and oversight. And we've got to build back the trust. I remember having a conversation with you, quite frankly, about, there was a time when the HTA was held up as an example of how this can work and what went wrong, right? So in my six months in and around the Hawaii Tourism Authority, I've asked a lot of questions. Many of you, I've spoken with directly, just to understand and level set what is, what's the core reasons for the view and the brand that is HTA today? And how do we get it back to the level that it, you know, it once was at? And so it's a very good question. And I think the beauty of having the Board again is that it's top of mind for all of us. All of us. If you go back six Board meetings ago, we've been level setting the conversation around, how do we build trust again with the public, with the legislators, and with, you know, the people of the state? And so work in progress, but it is at the heart of the conversations.
A lot of residents feel that if we didn't spend one more dollar on marketing, that people will still come. The airlines will still spend their money marketing. Hotels will still have to market their properties. And they do so now, but many times based on the, and I know when I was Chair, many of the hotels cut their marketing budget because of the state's monies that went into marketing to supplement. That if we didn't put any more money, that Hawaii wouldn't go dark. What do you say to that?
I think it's a co-co thing. I think it's a collective effort. We cannot take for granted that Hawaii as a brand will carry the day, especially if you don't nurture it and protect it. And in fact, advertise and market it, you know? And there's other locations across the country and the world, for that matter, that spend their requisite dollars to ensure that the brand, in this case for us, Hawaii, is top of mind for the traveler. I think we have to find the balance, you know? And I think part of that balance is quality of life for residents. You know, there's got to be consideration divided by the resident, residents and quality of life for this benefit, economic benefit that is tourism. I really think we're starting to strike that right balance. I really do.
My last question, Chair. So one of the things that I've said is that, you know, we can spend millions and millions on advertising and marketing, but if the visitor come here and does not have a good experience, if our environment is not good, if their lodgings are not good, if they're not treated well with aloha, they're not coming back. I don't care how much money we spend, you know? So again, that balance, and I know back when it was just all marketing dollars, and we weren't spending enough on taking care of trails and on making sure that the visitors, you know, have a good experience. Doesn't matter how much money we spend, right?
Agreed.
Thank you. So I just got one question, and again, thank you, Blaine, for wanting to serve. So how do you interpret the role of the HTA Board in managing tourism in Hawaii, particularly in balancing the interests of residents, visitors, and the environment? And if you could just give me an example of how you have advocated sustainability and community engagement in your previous roles?
So I think directly, it's an extremely important component of tourism. And by extension, the Hawaii Tourism Authority Board, its kulianah responsibility is to balance all of that, right? I think in the end, and maybe a good example, recent one, it's, you know, from the tragedy that was the Maui wildfires, lots of really meaningful conversations have taken place, not just around tourism, but quality of life in terms of housing and infrastructure and all of those issues. So I think it is absolutely the Hawaii Tourism Authority's responsibility to be front and center on those subjects. You know, I, six months ago, started off with, you know, my hope for the Hawaii Tourism Authority is that it becomes just that, the authority on anything that has to do with tourism and its implications, including sustainability, in our communities. And I think we're on the right track. I really do think we've got a Board that is focused on that goal and ensuring that, you know, results come from it. In terms of experience in my professional life, you know, I think I'd use this analogy. So, you know, I come from a brand, Hawaiian Airlines, over the years that has been really good. And there have been times when they've been really bad. And there have been times that have been challenging. And I think, I think the focus needs to be on what makes up the brand. And in the end, for Hawaiian, it's the people, right? The people performing their jobs and feeling included and part of the, you know, the big picture. That relates, I think, to, you know, focusing in on the right measurements. So when Hawaiian focused on its people, good results came. I think for the HTA, if we focus on the people, and that's a combination of kamaaina and visitors and the place, you know, the land, that's the formula by which we can move forward and make this work.
So thank you. I'm glad you used that analogy. I know when we first came out on the fire, and the challenge was, do we go? Don't we go? Do we go? Eddie, we go? You know, you guys did a really good job. I mean, you guys were boots on the ground. I think that said a lot. You know, I've always been a Hawaiian airline fan, regardless, up, down, sideways we went, and so forth, in Molokai, out of Molokai. I think your personal experience has brought a lot to the table. So thank you for that, and hope to see you continue use that analogy going forward in HTA. Any other questions? Senator Kim.
Who does the marketing for Hawaiian Air?
So the current, the head of marketing is Avi Mattis.
It's in Hawaiian Air?
Yeah, within Hawaiian Airlines.
And your team of marketing is Hawaiian Air?
The on-staff team is Hawaiian Airlines, correct. But I think we use outside firms for certain functions of the marketing.
Okay, but you don't wholesale contract somebody to do your marketing? So why would you do that for the convention center then?
I mean, it's a good question.
Okay, please think about it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, I guess in lieu of that, is, because you don't do the marketing?
Right.
For Hawaiian Airlines?
I don't.
You don't, right? Somebody else does it, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
I, you know, just not to digress, but I do think, at least from my perspective, the last six months, asking questions and researching sort of the history, you know, when you have a brand that's trusted, and when people in the community and you all hear the term HTA, Hawaii Tourism Authority, and you think that is the gold standard, that is the good housekeeping, seal of approval for anything related to tourism in the state, then you can probably bring marketing into the organization. As it is now, we're having to, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty. And so it's very difficult to bring those decisions in-house when you're not sure what your future looks like. So I, it's a short-term answer, but...
Yeah, but that decision was made way, way back.
Yeah.
Was outsourced, and then it was brought back in, and then was outsourced again, so.
Senator Pavella.
Couple of things, but most of all, just congratulations for willing to serve. I was just reading a lot about you. I never knew that you was that old. Sorry, forty years. Jesus, I thought you were the same age, but anyway. Just a willing, willing to serve at this capacity. And when I was listening to you say, taking for granted branding, I think in, in general, you know, the Hawaii tourism, I think that was one of the issues, I think. I don't know, because I want to be in here about a few years in this square building. But as I was here, listening and whatnot, I really think that that's where a lot of our stuff went wrong, that we just figured, you know, Hawaii gonna sell itself. But now there's so much other destinations out there that competes us for those dollars. And if we don't beef up and we don't concentrate on what is important on the branding and going forward for our industry, then in the next 10 years, we're not gonna have the big volume, you know, of that we have in going forward. And marketing is very important and branding is very important. Because everybody taking our stuff, stamping Hawaiian on them and calling made in Hawaii. You know, if we don't get a hold of those things and going forward, I think this is the reason why I think this dynamic way of moving forward is gonna work. I mean, you know, you've been in Hawaiian Airlines, the good, bad and the ugly, and you stood there, you know, and, and, and you, you know, you strive for excellence. So I think in that, you know, I know you, we talked about you having the, um, the capacity or the time to, to, to do that, but I, I know how you prioritize some of your stuff and, uh, and you get it done, and I appreciate that going forward. But if you're thinking that, like for me, this is my, my point of view, because I am new here, but you're thinking that's something that we kind of, kind of did? That we took advantage of the greatness of Hawaii and its product and its people? And, you know, as the years went by, we didn't really sell the greatness of our people and marketing going forward?
I think there's, you know, part of it is that. I also think we just lost our way a little bit. But some of it is competing interests and changing, change of, changing of attitudes and, you know, it probably became much more of an issue when we hit the 10 million mark.
Yeah.
And without any sort of consideration for the infrastructure and for how you deal with, you know, those kinds of numbers. And in the end, at least, I'm very passionate about this, it's gotta be divided by the people. It has to be, because, you know, if, um, if they see benefit, not just economic benefit, but quality of life improvements that come from this industry and that we treat the employees well, who work in this industry, it, it, that's a formula for success. That can work.
And just going forward, this is kind of outside the box, but you know, I'm that kind of guy. You know, when I came into this square building, one of my colleagues had an awesome idea about the convention center that probably never even took off. Now that we have leaking roofs and mewdo and falling apart buildings, that concept would have worked perfectly because it would have solved a lot of those issues. So I'm just saying, going forward, do you think that we can look into the future going forward? And some of the stuff that Senator Kim had implied a few years back, I'm not gonna say how many years, because I'm still a youngin' and I don't want to go there. No, 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 no. Definitely, I'm not saying that, sorry. Sorry, Senator Kim. I mean, we just graduated together, 2001. It was, it was, it was an eye-opener for me. I don't know if you've ever seen it. I've seen the video, I've seen this, seen the book. I think that concept in selling our marketing, Hawaii, our product, hula, dancing, culture, everything, was all into one. But it, for whatever reason, it didn't surface. So going forward and working with you guys closely, and of course, with my youngest sister, Nana Kim, to move this forward, because I think it's a great idea. I think it always was a great idea. But we need to work it out and see how we can implement this going forward if we're talking branding and marketing. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, and thank you, Blaine. Okay, no, no other questions? We're gonna move on to GM 702. Submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Agri, Board of Directors of Hawaii Tourism Authority, Governor Tora Nominee, Mufi Hanneman, for a term to expire 6/30/2027. First up, Daniel Naho Ope, testifying for Hawaii Tourism Authority.
I'm for the record, Daniel Naho Ope, Hawaii Tourism Authority. You've already read our written testimony, stand on that, as well as what I recently gave on comments. But I wanted to add in addition, as Chair Hanneman, being my boss, as the Chair of the Board, I have learned much through him and you have seen it progress. He has increased communications among the legislators and the HTA staff and the HTA Board. He has really directed the Board's members themselves. We have very productive committee meetings now that integrate the staff and the board on developing new policy issues and identifying other projects and issues to work on. So you have seen just in the few months that he has been the Chair, the transformation that we've had. And I look forward to working, and the rest of staff look forward to working with him to see more changes in, for the good. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, Keith Hayashi, in support.
Hello, Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, members of the committee, Keith Hayashi, Superintendent. I did submit my written testimony in strong support of Mr. Hanneman. I did want to add though, on another note, that in my capacity as both an elementary and high school principal, as complex area Superintendent, and now as Superintendent, I have had the extreme fortune of, good fortune of working with Mr. Hanneman to support our students and our employees throughout the public education system. And I look forward to continuing that in, in his new role. So I just wanted to share that in addition to my testimony, written testimony. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, Jade Bute, testifying behalf of Department of Labor, Industrial Relations, in support. Rick. Iged. Iged, for Waikiki Improvement, sorry, Association.
No problem, everybody mispronounces it. I, I just wanted to say today that, you know, we truly, I truly appreciate Mufi's dynamic leadership of the visitor industry. And I, and I think that if you, if you really want to characterize when that really makes an impact, things like when we were going through COVID, Mufi really took the lead to make sure that the industry was prepared to allow people to return and to handle, to handle the potential dangers of COVID. It was really, it was a major effort within the industry that Mufi organized. And, and then just recently, of course, the aftermath of the Maui wildfires, the industry under Mufi's leadership really came together to try and support, and it was mostly industry employees that were in that housing that burned down. And so, you know, we had to take care of, of all of the associates that were affected as well as the, the rest of the resident population. So that, that leadership is the kind of thing that really helps us to succeed as a state. I've known Mufi a long time, many of you know.
Thank you, Rick, you timed it out. We have your testimony.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up, Robin Kennedy.
Hi, thank you, Chair. No music, that was my dance up here. I thought we might dance, aren't we?
True, Carolina was good.
Yeah, right? Thank you so much for allowing me to speak on Mufi's behalf. I am the Vice President of Hagadon Media, but I run several nonprofits. There are a lot of things that I shared in this testimony that I'm gonna read really quickly that I wanted to write. Please forgive me for reading, but there's so much to say. I am here to represent wholeheartedly and recommend Mufi Hanneman to be confirmed on his appointment to the Hawaii Tourism Authority's Board of Directors by Governor Josh Green. I've had the privilege of knowing Mufi for almost 20 years and have witnessed firsthand his exceptional leadership, unwavering dedication and profound impact on the community and to our state. Throughout his illustrious career spanning the public, private and nonprofit sectors, Mufi has demonstrated unparalleled commitment to serving the people of Hawaii. As the former mayor of the city and county of Honolulu, Mufi's visionary leadership and effective governance earned him widespread admiration with a remarkable 80% job approval rating during his tenure. His achievements in office, including his pivotal role in promoting economic development and enhancing community engagement, attest to his exceptional leadership capabilities. In his current role as President and CEO of the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, he has continued to excel as a champion for the hospitality industry and catalyst for positive change.
Thank you, Robin. We have it, sorry, yeah.
And I'm sorry that I didn't understand that you could present, submit this testimony and then just stand here and say, I support it. So is there a way to submit this?
You can give it to our staff and they'll take it.
Bottom line, excellent choice, full-heartedly support.
Thank you. Next up, Brian Miyamoto, behalf of Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Brian Miyamoto, here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have a written testimony. We are in strong support of Mr. Hanneman's nomination. The Farm Bureau has worked with Mr. Hanneman for over 20 years, over two decades. And in that time, we've fallen into be a strong supporter of agriculture. And he continues in his current role at HLTA, and we're excited in his new capacity or his current capacity and hopefully continue capacity with HTA. We want to continue to collaborate with our tourism industry. Agriculture and tourism have a strong bond, and Mr. Hanneman has been very instrumental in elevating agriculture as far as with, within the tourism hospitality industry. And we hope to continue that and in his work at HTA. So we are in strong support of his nomination. We urge the committee and the Senate to confirm Mr. Hanneman. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Brian. Next up, Jessica Rich, Hawaii Visitor Aloha Society of Hawaii.
Aloha, Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai and members of the committee. I want to extend my full-hearted support to Mufi Hanneman as the Chair of the Hawaii Tourism Authority because of his outstanding records of accomplishment and especially his recent actions in tourism, for sustainable tourism, respect for our cultural values. And I help visitors who are victims of crime and Mufi stood up in Waikiki for creating the visitor, visitor, those of us who are partners in the industry. And as a result, there is lower crime in Waikiki. He has also expanded the visitor industry charity walk. He supports the youth. He is dedicated, hardworking. He is the hardest working person in tourism. I sort of call him the tourism energizer buddy, because he has, every time you look at Mufi's, he's doing something wonderful. Therefore, we full-heartedly support him as Chair.
Thank you very much. That's a classic. I haven't seen somebody written testimony on a note paper like that. Next up, in support for D-Bed, Dr. Tokyoka. You know, there's 102 people in support. For the record, if it says, I gotta read them all, like, I'll just like give it over. But, you know, is there anyone else here wanting to testify and support? Chair.
Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, members of the committee. Jared Igashi, Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, the strongest support for GM 702 and the nomination of my boss, confirmation to the Hawaii Tourism Authority Board. I've been informed that my testimony, I guess, had technical difficulties when I submitted it online. And so it wasn't included, it wasn't posted. And so for the record, I did want to note that there was several testimonies that were sent directly to our office that was included in that packet. And that included letters of support from Mayor Rick Longardi, Peter Hope, CEO of Bank of Hawaii, Gontakaki, Chairman for Hocktree International, Peter Shalyn, Chief Operating Officer for Harley Colony Corporation, Chad Thompson, founder of TiHadi Productions, and Jim Barrowhall, President and CEO of the Honolulu Marathon. I've been informed that the, their testimonies have been provided though today in your packets. And thank you very much for your time and again, strong support for GM 702. Mahalo.
Thank you. Anybody else seeing none? Mufi, would you like to say a few words?
Hello, Maikako. Good to see so many of you on this committee that I've known for a long, long time. So I won't talk about those long, long memories, because we'll all give away our ages. But that being the case, I'm pleased to be, to come before you. This is an important assignment that the governor had asked me, charity walk, last year. He came and participated and asked me if I'd be willing to serve on the board. I said I need to go back to HLTA, which is my job. This would be voluntary, as you know, all of us that serve on boards and commissions. I wanted to make sure that HLTA Executive Committee and the board would be okay with it. And then I had to consult with my family and also a new round of doctors that I had to assume because of the fact that as you get older, I started to have problems with some old injuries, especially with my leg. And everybody was telling me to take things off your plate, don't put things on your plate. And because I knew that the challenges that we're gonna face with the industry and certainly the last few years have been very difficult and challenging, anything I do, I, I give it my all. And so I had to make sure that I was prepared to do that. And so I've done that, blessed with, with a hard-working staff at HTA. Obviously, communication dialogue has improved with the board. And also I wanted to make sure that I engaged the board members to all be a part of what we needed to do, especially in this big square building. So this is where I stand today and I come before you and prepare today, Madam Chair, to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for wanting to serve, Mufi. I also wanted to extend my congratulations to Last Night Legacy Award to you on behalf of myself to you. With that, I'll open up for the committee for any questions. Senator Favella.
Legacy in tourism. I'm not gonna read the whole book, guys.
Thank you.
You guys know I hate to read anyway. But it highlights the man that we have before us in his legacy with tourism. So I always joked around with him before, many of times when we're together, you know, ourselves. And I always tell him that, you know, if anybody should have the name, I like to do a label, but the name, Mr. Tourism, that's Mufi Hanneman. With all the things that he bring and the dynamics that he bring, even when he was a mayor, he worked on other things that would help and enhance tourism. Even when he got a sewage problem at the aloha and everybody was blaming him, but if he did not step up at that time, every single hotel, every single restaurant, everything to do with lifestyle of ours and tourism would have been literally doo-doo. So, so going forward, I am so proud and happy to see you here, Mufi. But my question for you going forward, on the educational aspect, on how we can enhance our children moving forward and your, what you told me and what was your guys' goals in the sense of why we need to have more programs and more scholarship for our kids? Can you kind of elaborate a little bit on, on why it's important for our kids to go learn in the tourism and hospitality industry?
Thank you, Senator. Thank you for that question. You know, I go back to my history of when I first started working in the industry. Those days, thanks to my sister Va, who's here today, she got me my first tourism job. I was a lot boy in the old Waikiki Hotel. And I guess Va knows that she had to come and tell me I was spending too much time.
Talking to the girls.
I was spending too much time. Oh, Donna. I was spending too much time heading over to the Tahitian Lanai, parking the cars of those who worked there, because I wanted to go and get their banana muffins. And, and so from there, working at Payless U-Drive, being part of the lot boys there. And of course, my brother Nephi, who had this long illustrious career as a Polynesian man in Waikiki. So at that time, I started to appreciate and understand that this industry really does employ a lot of people. And every family has a member that's affected by employment in the industry. So where we are today, Senator Favella, is that this is an industry that in a good year can provide over 200,000 jobs. In a good year, it can bring in at least $19 billion of visitor spending. In a good year, it can contribute almost a billion dollar in transit accommodation taxes. And as much as our good governors, past, present, mayors throughout the county, a great congressional delegation have tried to diversify the economy, to move it away from tourism. It always comes back to this. So with that, and the fact that we have a workforce shortage, the beauty of the tourism industry is that you can either have a lot of education, like we're trying to do now with last night's fundraiser, to create more scholarships for public school students to go and pursue a four-year degree at UH Monor, or someone with very little education. go and pursue a four-year degree at UH Monro, or someone with very little education, there's a job somewhere in the industry. So I really believe that, I'm asking HTA, and Daniel is working with the staff, to really now come up with a robust plan of workforce development that will not just be hotel-centric or airline-centric, if you will, the two big employers in the past. I want to bring in all the aspects of the industry, small businesses, attractions, retail, ground transportation, so forth. And then to be able now to start incentivizing them and understand what is it going to take? Is it internships, paid internships? Is a bill going through, thank you for supporting it? Where the hospitality industry now is going to be able to employ interns that are going to be paid to be able to get the kind of training we'd like for them to have. So all these things, I think, will lead, I think, to more opportunities, and we go into the public high schools. We've been doing that at HLTA for many years now, having programs at public high schools to ensure that we can build upon that and that they can understand. Because for many of them, they think that the industry doesn't provide an assortment of jobs that they might be interested in. So this is going to tell them, hey, look, if you're interested in technology, if you're interested in sustainability, if you're interested in sales and marketing, if you're interested in knowing more about Hawaiian culture, if you're interested in being a chef, if you're interested in music, arts, entertainment, all of that is in the industry. And I really think it's our challenge to be able to now to bring that out, work with everybody collaboratively, make sure that we maximize the dollars that you provide for these things, so that whether it's your school, which is the largest public high school in the state, Campbell, or to Molokai High School, they will all understand and know that if I want to work, I can have a job in the industry, and we're going to help you prepare for that job.
Thanks so much. The reason why I bring this up is that, you know, it was really nice to see Chris Tatum last night, and I remember went to an event, again, I don't remember the names because I graduated so long ago. But anyway, Chris Tatum and you had a program that, I think the program you guys are enhancing and working with Senator De La Cruz, I think. But what I liked about that event, it was very small, not too many schools at the time, but you guys instilled, meant with telling the parents and the children there that the four-year scholarships, that's going to be, one day, every single local kid that graduate through the program is going to be the leaders in all of our hotels. And that, when you and Chris Tatum told me that, that set an imprint in my head because of where we stay on West Oahu and our side of the island where all the tourist attractions and tourism is heading, not as big as Waikiki, but just as beneficial. So when you guys said that, that one day, all the people that are working at the hotel in leadership and beyond are going to be our kids, and that was something that was very important to me. And, you know, I always support tourism, but that really hit something home for me, knowing that our kids have a future in the industry that is going to be striving even better. So that's what I wanted to bring up. Thank you, man.
And Senator, I want to commend Senator De La Cruz for taking that program that Chris and I started. We used HTA funds at that time to get it off the ground, to fund full four-year scholarships. Now with Senator De La Cruz's support and folks also voting to approve it, the bill's moving through in the House outside, we are now providing opportunities for kids to continue the Ho'oleina Scholarship. But it's now a four-year scholarship, a four-year scholarship plus Roman Board. So we've actually enhanced the package. And we're seeing them, and many of them were there last night.
Yes.
You know, they went, the first class graduated, some of them have found employment with Kahala Resort, with the Rich Carlton Waikiki, one is even with the Marriott Program in San Francisco. And even the non-tourism companies have hired them. Pasha has hired them. Deloitte has hired them. So it just shows how broad the reach is of tourism.
Yeah, this is my last one. The reason why I was really happy is that I seen a lot of my young Campbell graduates that is working at the Sheraton. There was a lot of them, and I was really happy, and they, they was happy to stand there and offer up thanks to you and the industry for allowing them. I mean, even though they have to drive all the way from Ever Beach to Sheraton, they don't mind because they're getting a good paying job. So thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Senator Kim. Senator Kim.
Do you know how long I've been waiting for this moment where you can ask your questions?
Wait, let me soften up a little bit.
Full disclosure, I've known Mufi since he was at Iolani. We grew up, lived right next door to each other in high school, and I can't seem to get away from the guy. And I noticed that the principal of Farrington High School, Al Caganita, sent in a testimony, but none from Iolani. I mean, I know you always said, I know you always said you couldn't pass the test for Farrington, that's why you had to go to Iolani, but...
No, Iolani graduates in there.
I see, okay, I just thought I'd highlight that. Do you guys know that Mufi spent more lunchtime hours at Farrington than he did at Iolani when he was there?
That's because I had cousins like Onosai Taravasa there, friends like James Spackleback.
Some girlfriends there, I will, I will not go into it.
Okay.
Okay, now let me get to the, let me get to the tough questions. So Mufi, as, when, when, when I first came on the Senate and we looked at HTA, and HTA was in its format, forming years, the criticism was that it was too heavily weighted with the hotel industry, which is why we had to change the makeup of the board and add in all that, and that was a criticism. And so now, you being the head of HLTA, how do you deal with that, that kind of feeling that perhaps you will tend to be more on the side of the hotel industry versus everybody else in tourism?
Let me answer it in two ways, Senator Kim. I'm glad you asked the question. First of all, I think by statute, we can only have two members of the board, of the 12-member board, that come represent hotels.
Right. But that doesn't stop you from leaning towards...
Yeah, well, in my case, because of my job, my paid job with the Hawaii Lodging Tourism Association, ours is an industry that not only involves hotels, but airlines, transportation, ground transportation, retail, attractions. We have more non-hotels that are members of HLTA than HLTA itself. And that was put to a test during the pandemic, when I had to put together a coalition of organizations that represented various aspects of our membership and make sure that whatever I was doing wasn't just done for the hotels' interests, if you will, that it had to be good for everyone. So when Jared Higashi, who does the government affairs for HLTA, we always try to build broad coalition for any type of issue that we bring up. And it's not just promoting what's important for the hotels, but if the ground transportation industry has a concern, we'll raise that. If it comes from the attractions, retails, what have you, so everyone is on a level playing field. Because at the end of the day, it is what has made this industry so strong in terms of the revenues that I was talking about that happened and so forth, and the jobs that it creates. So I feel personally, I don't have a conflict, that I'm able to have that balance by virtue of the fact that, I think that's the only way of doing it. When this organization that I had up, was first started many years ago, back in 1947, longer and older than anyone in this room, I believe is, it was a hotel organization. When I came on board in 2010, I changed the name because I said, I want to evolve it. I don't want it to be hotel-centric. So it became not only the Hawaii Hotel Association, but the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association. That's why I feel very comfortable in saying that, from my standpoint, I represent more than just the hotels, I represent the industry as a board member.
Good. I knew you were going to say that, but we had to have that for the record. You know, we had a recent hearing not that long ago where we found, were told that we were, we were hiring, or we had, HTA had a consultant that we were paying, I forgot how much was it we were paying, to manage the contracts, the grants, the hospitality...
Oh, in HTA, it was $12 million, it was 15%.
Of grants, right. Just to, just to manage those and give out those contracts. And frankly, I thought that was money spent that should have been in-house, managed in-house, and not necessarily money going out the door. So is that something you're aware of and something that you feel needs to be looked at?
Yeah. I believe that if we can do it in-house, we should, in everything that we do, whether it's in disseminating contracts or some of the things that we do from a public affairs standpoint or public relations, if you will. So I have asked President Nahopii that the board is interested to seeing how we can make a stronger case for keeping it in-house as opposed to spending dollars and these services going outside. And you will see in the budget that we have coming before you, and thank you very much for approving a $63 million budget here. Much of that calls for making sure that we can hire people in-house to do that. So if we're going to now keep it in-house, I just want to make sure the staff, where you have some people are doing two jobs instead of one, or vacancies that haven't been filled, that we can do that, and the money's going to be there to do that. And I think one of the ways to identify that money is if we now try to reduce the amount of money that has been going outside of the agency so that we can keep it in-house to hire people.
Because it used to be done in-house. Who was it? Miriam? I forgot who she was. She handled all of the, all of the awards, the community awards and stuff in-house at HTA. So, you know, along that line, again, that convention center marketing contract is something that I hope that you guys will revisit as well.
Yeah, yeah. Well, as I said, whatever the will of the legislature, you know, what I've tried to even say to the industry, as long as you folks are responsible for our budget, it has to be a two-way street.
But it has to make sense.
And it has to make sense. And so if that's something of concern to the legislature, it may not have been our first choice, second choice, whatever, but if that's what you folks have mandated that we need to do, then we need to address it.
And then finally, we had a discussion in Ways and Means about the CEO's salary, and I think there was a statement made as to capping that salary. Is that something that you folks have come to terms with at this point?
We have in the present budget before you, and of course, now it's going to go to conference because you folks came up with $63 million, the House came up with $60 million. The good news there is that for two years of being defunded...
Any amount.
Any million is good. Let me be serious about that. The fact that now, it's, and it's also recurring, where it starts as a base budget every year as opposed to starting at zero, you're going to start at 60 or 63. I do, we have in that budget, a call for an increase for the CEO and the brand marketing manager. And we did that after having a comprehensive review that was conducted by one of our members, Michael White, who looked at what other entities like in HTA are paying for their chief executive officer or their brand marketing manager. So we're still on the low end of that. But I just feel that if we're going to be serious about it, then we have to do that. So in the present proposal, you can pay up to $300,000. It doesn't mean that we have to, and there's no bonuses that's going to be tied into it. I know that was a big concern, you have a bonus there. Since I've come in, working with Daniel and the staff, we've eliminated all bonuses as any contract that, contract employee that HTA would have.
So you still have that $300,000 in it?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Senator Wakai. Thank you. Mufi, congratulations. I've always enjoyed working with you on tourism and Pacific Islander issues over the years. And I do want to make, pose questions to you based on this Hawaii Tourism Authority governance study that came out last week. It's, points to a very troubled organization. So the questions I'm going to ask are not an indictment on you, but it will point to what is wrong with the governance of the authority. And I just want to start off by, the opening findings characterize HTA as an organization that is impersonal, with an organizational, organizational-centric approach which focuses on command. There's a tendency towards one-way communication, a siloed organization structure, limited transparency amongst its management. Do you agree that with this, these characterizations of the Tourism Authority and the staff there?
Well, I've been on board, say, I came on board in August, and I've been chair since December. And I'm committed to ensuring that that governance study is available to the public, not just the legislators. And if it was commissioned by us, then we certainly have to abide by these recommendations that are coming out. And if this is one of the findings, then obviously that is not going to be acceptable to me. And so without even knowing that, I can assure you, Senators, that since I've come on board as a chair, the communication between the board and management is a lot better. We have a situation where they understand that my style of leadership calls for openness, transparency, as well as a very cooperative working relationship, and we need to pay attention to the major stakeholders, in government, in private industry, in our Loaui, and all the other entities that we work with. So my job is to fix it. And if that is one of the findings of the governance study, again, it was prior to my ascension to the chairmanship, governance study of this sort in a year or two will not reveal that because it will change.
But you recognize some of the flaws that are pointed out in this?
I have not seen the study, but if that is one of the flaws that have been pointed out, certainly I will address it.
Okay, it points out to many other flaws, which I want to get into. Talks about the staff there, that many of them are not qualified for the roles that they perform at HTA, and really, they're evaluated based on their administrative proficiency and contract management. Do we have really qualified staff within the Hawaii Tourism Authority?
The people that I have been working with, as I said, I have not worked closely with them because I just came aboard, I find that they are qualified. They may not be, and I'm going to quote from Jim Collins' book, Good to Great, "The mark of a good leader is he puts the right people in the right seats on the bus." So if anything, I see a need perhaps to shift some folks that have been there to maybe do a responsibility or an assignment that they are better suited for, from my perspective or the board's perspective. But I haven't found anyone there that shouldn't be employed there. They may be in the wrong position, or they may not have had proper supervision in the past, and that's all going to change.
When I read through this 30-page report, most, much of the criticism focused on the high-level executive team and their lack of transparency and their lack of ability to communicate everything from operations to strategy. So how does that juxtapose with what you just said, where you feel like you got the right people there, maybe should be moving around, but this study says that the executive team there has created a culture of the complete opposite, lack of transparency, lack of communication with those, the staff employees. Help me reconcile how you see something dramatically different than what came out in this governance study?
Yeah, sure. Because I think it should have been the board stepping in. If that was the case, it's the duty of the board. That's who the employees report to. And perhaps it was the board that was being lax, that didn't ask the right questions, that didn't exercise the type of administrative experience that I am in this job here. So as I said, I haven't found anyone there now that I don't think belongs in that, there at HTA, but they perhaps are, needs to shift in a different... And I think the other thing that I found, I'm finding is that some of them are doing two jobs. And that's why I came and said, you know, we need to, we assign some of these folks here, or make sure that we can fill those positions properly. So I'm, I'm not as troubled by that because I certainly will not, and we haven't been since I've been the chair of the board, conducting it. If I find anything that, if anything I've said to them, when we come before the legislature, this is what I just personally say, let me be critical. I don't want HTA coming up there not being prepared to give testimony. I don't want HTA to come up there and fudge. I don't want HTA to not return calls, okay, or answer texts, or answer emails. That, that stops. And I've said that to President Nahopii, that anyone that deals with the legislature has to understand it, or private industry, or the community. And that's what I found, if anything, that they weren't getting back to people promptly or... or what the answers needed to be. And it's okay to say, I don't know, or let me get back to you.
The most troubling part of this report that I found was the staff's interviews in their description of how management treated them. And these were the words from staff as to their assessment of those above them. "They are stressed. They work in an environment that is cruel and inhumane." I don't know of many work environments where employees would say that they work in a cruel, inhumane environment. Is that troubling to you?
No, because I'm not conducting myself that way. Really isn't. I think if you go talk to the present staff now, and I think you heard that when Daniel Naho P. came up, he said, it's changed. We don't conduct ourselves that way anymore, and they're always involved.
The interviews for this study was like two months ago. It wasn't like two, three years ago. It was, it was this past year.
I was in chair two months ago. I mean, if this interview was taken, it was based on probably on previous experience, but that certainly hasn't been the case from my personal standpoint.
Okay, so you do not agree with most of the findings in this report?
Well, they, it obviously, I mean, the consultant probably got it from someone there, but I'm just saying now, I'm not troubled by it because were I guilty of that, yeah, I'd be concerned that, oh, I've been found out. But I certainly don't conduct myself that way, neither does the vice chair, the present regime that's in place.
Right, right. So like I mentioned at the outset, this is not an indictment on you or Blaine. It just shows what you and Blaine are inheriting is a very troubled culture and environment.
And I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. If I were not aware of the challenges that I'm facing, some I am aware of, some I'm not, we'll fix it. And that's what I'm saying to you today. We will fix that. Because that cannot be the type of environment there. I personally haven't seen it, I haven't experienced it. So I'd like to talk to the consultant myself, if in fact, where did they get this from? Because I think it needs to be done. You're exactly right. Those words are troubling. But as I said, I'm not bothered by it because my intention is to fix it, if in fact it does exist to that extent.
Can I just ask, who did this, who did this report?
I don't know who's contracted to do this.
Who contracted it? I'm sorry, I'm just seeing it now, but who paid for this?
So we don't have money to fix our mics or something?
I think what the senator is referring to is our deliverables, internal deliverables. I think it's number two deliverable that we just received the other day. These are considered, this is not the final report. Report, as we know, will be done in May and June. We still have a lot of work to do. They're doing public meetings and work groups coming up. Better Destinations is the name of the consulting firm. It's made up of multiple consultants, including locally, Carrie Capoy from Maui, representing and helping us work in the community level, Kathy Ritter, who is actually the president/CEO of both Chicago, Denver, and quite a number of other consultants across the country.
So who paid for this?
This is, was awarded, well, funded by the board. This is HTA's money. It's a follow-up to the recommendations that came out from both U-Hero as well as some of the bills that came out last year about doing this kind of governance study. So the board took it on themselves to continue that discussion through this governance study.
So how much did HTA pay?
$300,000.
Paid $300,000?
And it was done through an RFP process.
Okay, and it came out when? It's just I never got it till right now, and I'm surprised.
The report or invitations for interviews?
No, the report.
No, it's not a report. Those are internal deliverables, and these are all draft documents.
They're draft documents. There's this draft form there.
And these are interviews and interview discussions. The consultant will continue to analyze this and put this together with all the other interviews as well as research they've been doing to come up with these recommendations. These are not their recommendations yet.
Okay, so what, I guess I'm trying to get is that, is it being given to the public?
No.
Then how?
I don't know.
I'm just like, I never see it.
I don't know how it was.
Well, you guys, and therein lies the problem. You folks contracted this.
Yes.
You paid for it. It's your consultant or your whatever, RFP. And so how did a document like this then get beyond you or?
All I know right now is that we received the deliverables as per the timeline the staff receives and I distributed to our leadership on Monday. So for their review, and then we have a governance pick. I'm supposed to then release it to the governance pick and leadership of the board later today so that they can have their discussions.
This is the first I'm hearing about it.
Yes.
Does that bother you?
It bothers me that you folks have it, and it's in draft form, and it's being construed by some as if it is a final report. My understanding is that it's a work in progress. So again, this is something I inherited. It's no different than I'm inheriting on audit.
No, I understand.
That the things that have been done, whatever, it's all.
I'm just concerned that something's being let out prematurely, then if there's control by, again, the leadership or the entity that they're criticizing about, you know, certain things, and definitely the fact that this has been.
Yeah.
So I have the same concern. You know, I just got my hands on this.
I just got it from her.
You know, and I just like, check this, you know.
I'm like.
But, you know, and I'll say this, I was actually interviewed on this as well, which I was waiting for the final in May.
Right.
But before, you know, sorry.
So I just want to.
You know, and I think our conversation has been, and as you know, I've had my concerns. And many concerns, which I haven't been shy about it, was with personnel, which I think, you know, I've seen a lot of changes. I can tell you when I even announced it, you know, I've had problems with Caroline, and I think you are absolutely right. She was just in the wrong position. She was moved into another position, which, you know, Climb High was a perfect example. Program Climb High in Maui, 12 years. And I think you guys got her in the right place now to be handling that type of situation versus the DMAP situation, which I think for yesterday, and I believe Ilya guys went to Molokai. The report I got from Molokai was really well now received, was on a full balance of the community versus a few people, a better assessment. You know, so I want to just say that. I want to say, I'm bummed that this is out without full completion. I am truly bummed because I literally had an interview on this last week. I'm just going, what is this? But, you know, I'm going to shoot it. Anybody else have any other questions before I?
I haven't seen that before.
Yeah, so.
If I could just say, I mean, what you just described about how Molokai went well yesterday and your concern about a certain employee and the like, that's an example I'm going to treat this report that's still a work in progress. You bring it to my attention, it's going to be fixed. I'm going to address it. And so this one here, my understanding, it's, I'm just as surprised as you are that it's in your hands. I haven't even seen it, and therefore it will be addressed. But the good news that I take away, it's still a work in progress. So when it is going to be completed, then obviously I will take those recommendations very seriously, make it a priority. These things need to be addressed. So we just have to go on and find out. Again, I came in, I inherited this governance study. I personally felt they didn't need a governance study. That was my view when I was at HLTA. You know, I mean, fix the problem. The problem is you've been defunded. The problem is that people want to eliminate HTA. I didn't need a governance study to tell me that. But I inherited when I came in, they said, well, some members in the legislature wanted to see it, some members of the board, the previous board approved it. Fine. I got it. Moving forward. It's no different than the audit that I'm inheriting now. They say there may be some bad things that are going to come out of that one. Again, five years prior to my coming on board. But I've always treated audits, like when I was with the city, 10,000 employees and the like. Audits are done and they have a purpose. As long as they're fair, open, they give you a chance to rebut the things that you don't agree with, and the things that you need to address, you're going to address. So that's the attitude that I'm going to take, Madam Chair, whether it's this or anything else that comes out from HTA.
So I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that. I think that's really important. You know, most people are afraid of audits. I love audits because it'll tell you what you did good and the shitty part that you did, we work on it, you know. And then we can like just focus in on it. I know we've had our challenges. We've had challenges with just about every department. But, you know, those things focuses, having something like this too then becomes the roadmap again, right? And I had to say, like, sorry, I'm not picking on you, but we hate studies. It costs us, and if we know the problem, I'd like to see us.
I don't know if I would have voted for that if I was on the board. I really, I mean, seriously. I mean, when I was at the city as mayor, I had reputation for clean audits. You know, we just put it out there, go ahead, look at the books, open it up. When I became mayor, I asked Paul Yonamini to come in and do this on a voluntary basis. I said, I know the previous administration was not as diligent in terms of how the budget was disseminated, distributed, spent, what have you. But I didn't want to say that, and I didn't want to spend money, or a consultant said. So I asked Paul, can you round up a group of volunteers in the community, business folks to come in, and we will cooperate? And I called the cabinet meeting, asked all the cabinet heads to come in and say, look, Paul's going to ask for your full cooperation. Unless you've been funny kind with the money, or what have you, open it up. Open it up. We have nothing to hide.
So let me just bring this back home again then. You know, because there's always questions and people turn out stuff. I think I've asked you this question from day one. We've heard the question asked about the CEO position and the $300,000. And I just want to hit the elephant out of the room. Is there any, any thought process going forward that the CEO position is a position that you plan to put in for at HTA down the road?
Me?
Yeah.
No.
But I just want to address that because, you know, like, like you, you're going to do something, we're just going to go straight to the source.
No, I made that very clear.
Thank you.
I'm there to fix the problem. I'm there to leave it better than I found it. And I really believe with your help and your support, this session, Madam Chair, we've done remarkable. Three things were my goal coming in. I said, HTA in my mind stands as Hawaii Tourism Afterthought. I want to go back to Hawaii Tourism Authority. The three things we have to do is eliminate any more talk of HTA being eliminated. Number two, get on the legislative priority list on their budget. Let's not wait and go crying to the executive branch for our money, whether it's the Governor Iggy or Governor Green. Let's get it from the legislature. Let them bless the budget. And that's what you folks are doing. $63 million now at the Senate. The House, $60 million. Now you're going to go to conference. And then the third thing, make destination management and stewardship part of what we do. Put it in the statute. It's not just marketing. It's also destination management, and it's happening right now. That bill's going to get passed, or has been passed. So that being said, those things are being accomplished, and I want to fix that. We got to put in, as board members that are coming off, I've spoken with the governor and the president of the Senate and the Speaker of the House, I get some good people, and I know they're good people that want to come on now and be part of the Hawaii Tourism Authority. My colleague Blaine Yosada, he and I are the two latest appointees there, and there's holdovers. So we got, we have the right mix of folks there. And then also make sure that we have a staff and a team that we can work with so the things that you were reviewing today are not going to be occurring going into the future, that there's a total team concept.
Same thing, you know, just of course, back to addressing of, you know, there's been a lot of talk, and you know, I've had this talk, Anthology Contract, you know. Of course, I asked you to take care of it, you know, it's been a problem, the funding mechanism behind those contracts. What's your response to that?
My response is it is going to be taken care of. I've already asked Daniel to sit with Anthology and let them know that we will be putting out another RFP. It probably won't be the same amount that has been awarded presently. And because I see some of those responsibilities that can be done in-house.
And then, of course, my last question is basically, for seeing, you know, appreciate the dialogue, the quick communication from everything to the seal on the beach that, you know, gets attacked as well as halfway across of Molokai dealing with other issues that we've had. Can we look forward to that same dialogue and the questioning of open communication that we've had? I can tell you this, I've had a hard time with communication. I know that communication has been much better with the staff. Can we look forward to that?
Oh, absolutely. That's the only way I know how to relate to people is you have to have open communication. And you also have to recognize, we're not going to always be on the same page. But you always have to make sure that the dialogue and the door is open. You got to continue to try to find common ground. And I really believe it should be upon us, upon you and everyone else that we deal with, that we got to look for these win-win situations. Tourism is too important of an industry to ignore, to neglect, or to take for granted. And I think we have an opportunity now, with what has happened on Maui and the economic crunch that we face, to make tourism a regenerative type, make it better. Make it so that people want to not only come here and visit, but they're going to have a great experience. At the same time, our people are going to welcome them here, and that our young kids and those who are unemployed can look to an industry that can provide a livelihood for them and their families.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for the nominee? Seeing none, let's go to decision eight. Okay, first up, first GM on the agenda, GM 703, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Directors of the Hawaii Tourism Authority Gubernatorial Nominee, Blaine Yosada, for a term to expire 6/30/2027. Recommendation is to advise and consent any discussion members. Seeing none, vice chair for the vote. Chair goes aye.
Aye, vote yes. Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next, GM 702, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Directors of the Hawaii Tourism Authority Gubernatorial Nominee, Mufi Hanaman, for a term to expire 6/30/27/2027. Noting again that we received a governor's message today. GM 755, making a correction to GM 702 for Mufi Hanaman to serve as the chairperson designated on the Board of Directors of the Hawaii Tourism Authority. According to 201B, 2D Hawaii Vice Statute, the board shall elect a chairperson from among the members. A vote for him, a vote will be for him to confirm to the HTA board, and then the board will select their chair, noting that my recommendation is to advise and consent any discussion. Seeing none, vice chair for the vote. Chair goes aye.
Aye, vote yes. Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned for the 1:30. I asked that you please reach out. I know that you guys, that you guys did to the rest of my colleagues. With that, congratulations to our GM nominees. Mahalo for being here today. With that, we are adjourned.